Call this meeting to order. It's uh. It's six thirty P M on Monday, May the ninth. And this is the main meeting of the Township of Eversburg Cardinal. Uh, many of the whole meeting for administration and finance. And uh, the meeting is being held. Uh, both in the council chamber, and I think there was an option for people to attend by Zoom. But I see from my screen that nobody has joined us by Zoom as of this point in time. So uh, just because it is being zoomed and the camera doesn't capture the entire room. I'll note uh, for the record, uh, that there are twelve folks in the gallery. And uh, like to welcome you folks first of all, and say that. Uh, in the entire three years previous to this, I don't think we've had a total of twelve folks. And so you're welcome this night and uh, can't tell you how great it is to see folks out. And around and uh, take a part in the process. Uh, so also in the council chambers, uh, we have all members of council. Counselor Hunter, Deputy Mayor De Shap, uh, Counselor Dillawatt, Counselor Cameron, myself. As well as C A O Dave Grant, uh, the Treasurer Melanie Stubbs. Uh, the uh, Deputy Secretary Candace Newcomb. And uh, the Director of Operations Gordon Shaw. So that's just a few words of introduction. I'm gonna call for then the approval of the agenda. Does someone have a motion to approve the agenda?
No, it's not.
Okay. All right, I have Counselor Cameron moving and I take Deputy Mayor De Shap as the seconder to approve the agenda. And the motion will read as presented. Uh, are there any questions, discussions? Hearing none. About to call the question most in favor. Motion is carried as presented. And so now I'm proceeding to item number three on the agenda. Item number three on the agenda is disclosure, disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. If there is a disclosure, are there any disclosures here this evening? Chair notes no disclosures and the minutes will so um, so reflect. So now I'm at item number four on the agenda. Item number four on the agenda. Is business arising from the previous committee of the whole meeting, administration and finance? And that was the meeting that was held on April the eleventh. Those minutes have been approved by council. And the minutes were circulated in the package. Are there any questions or is there any business arising uh, from those minutes? Right, I hear nothing coming forward at all. I do seem to have a couple of things marked myself. And uh. This helps just for my own attention. All right, I'm proceeding then to item number five on the agenda. Item number five on the agenda is delegations and presentations. And we do have a presentation here this evening. And it's a presentation from Hans Road, uh, concerning safety concerns. Uh, at their company, uh, H F I Pyrotechnics. And uh, Mr. Grant, I think I'll ask you if you uh, introduce the, the presenters if you would please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, tonight we have with us, uh, Mr. Todd Giles and uh, this is Ryan Fields. And they, they, they would like to uh, uh, inter- introduce uh, some, some uh, safety concerns that they have with respect to uh, to, to Hans Road. So if you would like to uh.
Can we project?
We, we will, we, we, we will get that uh, projected up and if you wanna. The, the makeshift brain podium, uh, if you'd like to, you'd like to go. I, I would recommend facing uh, committee. You just have to turn, turn around to the ground.
So just before you start, now Mr. Grant, is there a handout?
Uh, there, uh, there, there, there is not, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I was uh, uh, tardy in, 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 in getting copies made.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, this can be provided afterwards.
Okay, that's fair enough. Thank you very much. Okay, so you have the floor, folks.
Great. Um, so thank you for having us uh, here this evening. What we do wanna talk to you about is uh, some of the safety concerns we have currently today, uh, with Hans Road that runs uh, through our uh, facility. Uh, we have operations on both sides of the road, so if you wanna go to the next slide. So we've been introduced, you could skip past that. Um, for those of you who are unaware of H F I Pyrotechnics, it was formerly Hans Fireworks, uh, years and years and years ago. Um, we uh, were purchased by our current owner in about two thousand and sixteen. Or, or so, and uh, at that time, um, we transitioned to become a military, um, pyrotechnics, uh, producer. So we produced components of pyrotechnics to uh, other military suppliers at that time, so. And then in two thousand and twenty, uh, we were added to the uh, initial supply program, which is a really big milestone for H F I. Uh, that made us a direct military supplier and uh, we currently hold six contracts with the Canadian Department of National Defense. Um, so we have one facility on Hans Road. Uh, there was, there was multiple facilities years gone by, but uh, we're consolidated to one facility. Um, and uh, there's six different production lines running today. So when uh, I joined the company in October twenty twenty, we were about sixty employees. Um, we're about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-four employees today. And that's all as a result of the growth from being part of the uh, management supply program. Uh, so um, as, as you can imagine, we, you know, that uh, growth in employment, uh, and these are all full-time jobs. Uh, with benefit, we actually increased our pay rates, uh, recently as well, uh, by about twenty percent, uh, over the COVID times. We didn't suffer any down times over COVID. Um, we did however, go through over three hundred people to hire the additional sixty-five folks. That we have now on staff, so there was quite a bit of turnover relative to serve and various other things that, that we were experiencing. But we've now retained most of our folks for the last uh, year and a half or so, or about seven months, sorry. Um, and uh, we're projected to continue to grow, um, as we get more contracts from. Department of National Defense. So I sort of touched on this, uh, on this timeline, there's some uh, key points here of when we sold off the fireworks and uh, you know, we. Took on the uh, military work, of course myself starting, and then uh, we had a fully new management team, so John Witherspoon, who many, many you might know. Is still the owner and C E O, uh, present C E O. Um, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer, so I've been on, on the ground running the day-to-day operations since October twenty twenty. And our, our main focus, as I said, is uh, continuing to work through COVID. Um, and we really shifted our focus to employee, military health and safety. So as we took on these new contracts, um, there's some new products involved, um, as well as new materials. So it was very important that we uh, we got focused on that for just why we're here today. Um, so it's a little hard to see on your screen, but uh, you can see the current footprint of H F I property lines there. It's a, it's sort of a, an odd square with a really skinny section, um, but it does span the Hans Road. Uh, it's about five hundred acres. Um, our internal roads on H F I, so we have a number of roads that come off of Hans Road that go into our facility. It's all of our, uh, we have twenty buildings spread out uh, for the production. Um, and all those roads are posted at less than fifteen kilometers an hour. So um, why we're here, so as I mentioned, we have a big focus on both our uh, community and employee safety. Um, uh, we really are looking for uh, your help to understand the best way to get some access controls. Um, of the Hans Road, uh, when it's going through our facility. Um, this is for a number of reasons. First is the H F I personnel themselves and their vehicles. Um, crossing the road, so we're gonna see in a moment where the high-risk crossings are, where we've had some recent near misses. Um, due to high rate of travel on Hans Road, uh, by, by folks not working at H F I. We also um, wanna make sure that folks understand that there's non-employees that are transit, transiting through H F I. Um, and that's an explosive zone, so we're governed under the Explosive Regulatory Act of the National Resources Council. And uh, this is actually the explosive zone, so we have safety precautions that we take for employees in that zone. Um, but where the road is uh, not, um, has no controlled access, it's hard for us to uh, ensure the safety of the, the folks, uh, who are driving down the road. And then finally, um, we are now a direct military producer, um, for the Department of National Defense. And so um, are, we have been asked to also look at our security, uh, both of our production facility. Um, for continuity and various other reasons, but also for protecting intellectual property. So we um, have some proprietary designs of those devices that we make, uh, there for the Canadian National Defense. So I'll hand it over to Todd, he'll take you through the details of where the risks are, why, why compelled us to be here today.
So this slide shows the high-risk crossings that we have access off of Hans Road into our facility. Going from left to right, the top one in here goes into our storage. So that first exit, we have, you know, two or three tractor trailers going in and out of that uh, that driveway. Given time, they're scheduled, but not from a uh, uh, public, no, there would be no public awareness when that would happen. The next two uh, are into a older side of our buildings and we have a production building in there. Again, delivery vehicles in and out, anything from a five-ton truck. Uh, some of our smaller vehicles up to, including tractor trailers going in and around that U shape. The next two that are directly across from each other, those are the main entrances to the factory themselves. One to the bottom is the south side of the road that goes into one of our uh, production buildings for our products. And it's also our main um. Receiving and shipping storage for all of our raw materials coming in and out of the factory. So we have tractor trailers going south mainly up there. The northern entrance is into the facility, the production workers' facility and our admin building, so we have the bulk of our personnel. Parking in that parking lot. Also, as we're a small facility, that's the main area where our foot traffic gets across that road. Years passed with uh, the reduced amount of people that we had at the time, it wasn't such a big deal. We might have had ten to fifty people crossing maybe twice a day. Now that we're a hundred and twenty-four people, we have forty to fifty people crossing at any one time regularly throughout the day. Next one down is uh, to our test site. We have people going in and out of there as well. And part of their duties is to remove some of our uh, by-product. Down to the, the storage area and the disposal area so that we can get rid of it. It is not dangerous, but it is, there's a risk if someone, if there was an incident to happen with that vehicle. So that's one of the concerns that we have. And the last one is an alternate route through our facility up and around some of our buildings, depending on the type of operations we have going on. Next slide, please. So highlighted in blue. This is where Hans Road transits, would be completely H F I property. So from that blue line all the way to the end there. That's where we see the main concern. We're really uh, trying to figure out the best way to increase the safety for our personnel. And also the general public when they're transiting up and down that road. When I say general public, it's kind of. There, there isn't a lot of vehicle traffic up and down there. What we see a lot of is recreational vehicle use and at high speeds. A lot of quads. Doesn't think uh, everybody's seen a tractor trailer pull out of a driveway. They pull way wide going around. As you come up over the hill going. East. East. As you come up over the hill right there, you're moving at a sufficient speed. I don't think that they get stopped if there was a tractor trailer pulling down one of those driveways. Uh, coming the other way, it's peep, it's uh, very low traffic that comes out of there, but it's capable. Whoever's gone. Next slide. So we're actually here to ask for your help. We'd like to reduce the risk to the H F I personnel that are crossing the vehicle or the road, and vehicles are on foot. We've gone so now, we have reduced the posted speed on Hans Road. Sorry, this is a suggestion. We've got signs up there right now for fifteen kilometers an hour, but they're a suggestion right now, yes. So this is what we're looking for from you, is ways to help. Uh, increase the safety, either reduce the speed limit on there, and I don't know how we could do that, and if we could get some enforcement. Uh, other visual cues that would be there, you know, like a, a giant uh, yellow painted crosswalk that you see in front of Walmart when you're going out there. Maybe that on the pavements. Speed bumps or rumble strips, or any other suggestion, uh, you guys could think of that would help us out. Uh, reducing the risk to non-employees transiting through H F I Pyrotechnics, uh, we had thought, and gates on the roads. At the, either in that blue strip that you saw on the first slide. That would be a challenge for everybody, but it, it, it's an option. Uh, rerouting the road around H F I property, again, that would probably be substantial cost and a ways away. Or any other suggestions that anybody might have to help us uh. lessen the risk to other people who are not directly involved within our manufacturing lines.
And just a, a note there on the, the gates, right, so it would not be to, to close it indefinitely. Of course, you would provide uh, escort through the, through the property for anyone who needed to go through the property. Um, we would be able to uh, provide that escort, of course, during, during working hours. Um, if it was outside working hours, we'd need to uh, probably have that planned in advance or scheduled so that we could have someone qualified, uh, escort someone through on the road.
That's the last slide except for the inevitable questions slide. So we're, we're willing to take your questions at this time.
Please all open the floor for questions. I see the Counselor Cameron. I'd like to get in here first, Counselor.
Yes, thank you. Um, has there been an official traffic count then?
Uh, no, I do not believe so.
So we really don't know this. Ten vehicles or a hundred vehicles a day going?
It's, it's very seasonal for sure, uh, but yes, I don't, we don't know. All I can tell you is our safety incidents that we have with uh, with the vehicles that are transiting through.
And then just, um, I'm a little bit familiar with your uh, with your area, however, I'm not. Really familiar with it, to the east of you. Is it, is, does the road continue on through there?
It, it does, but it ends at the four sixteen, I believe, uh, learning from Patty back there that, um, the four sixteen. Was it county, county road, I guess it's sometimes, and the four sixteen is, is separate.
Okay, and my last question, Mr. Mayor, is uh, if someone was going through. Down, down Hans Road past your facility, where would they actually be going?
Uh, we believe, we know of one private landowner. We, I've learned of another, at least one, maybe two, uh, coming here this evening, which is another reason we came this evening. Um, and uh, that's, that's, it would be for them to access their land. There aren't any homes to my knowledge, uh, to the east of us.
So is it farmland or cropland?
Yes, it's, if it's anything like our land, it's swampy woodland, but I'm not sure.
That, that's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Any else questions, Counselor Dillawatt? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, you said that you, you have approximately five hundred acres?
Yes.
Now, to make everything safe and make everyone happy, what, how many more acres would you need? Or is it an acreage problem? It's just a road problem?
It's honestly just, it's access problem is what I'd like to call it. Um, cause if you remember, there's, there's two, two safety points and then a security point as well, right? So now that we're a military supplier, so the main, the main issue we have is that. There are folks who don't work at our facility, transiting through our facility, and it's an explosive facility. As well as we have employees that as part of their daily work now, cross the road frequently. Um, and then, you know, uh, we have obviously physical security in place. But that's not to say someone could get curious and uh, get into something they're maybe not sure of, or, or could be unsafe to them if they're not qualified.
So you say safety, now that blue, I couldn't really see.
Yes, I know it's difficult here.
But was that the rare, where was it, where?
No, that blue streak is Hans Road.
No, I know that, but it goes all the way down to the, to the.
The rail, the rail bed's actually not on our property. It's right along the edge of our property.
I realize that, but it's beyond, it's beyond your, the fireworks, right, down.
The rail bed is?
Yes.
Yes, just like twenty feet. So our, our property goes right up to that.
So if you put a fence up, and we have maxing it on the rail bed, the A T Vs, how would we ever get out of the safety line? So you're saying you have a safety issue, you would have a safety issue.
Yeah, so um, there's, that A T V trail goes all the way to, that's mail at the other end.
Yes, but if we had to get emergency vehicles at least down to that, to the bed rail, and you have a gate up, how do we get in there?
So in a situation like that, in experiences I've had in the past, certain agencies would have access.
Nine-one-one would have access.
Never deny emergency vehicle access.
So similar to, you know, uh, how a firefighter elevator key or something to that, right? They, they would give them access, nine-one-one to transit the facility if they needed to get someone on the other side.
Other questions here? Counselor Hunter?
I'd assume by your presentation, that it's not really too much of the traffic of, of cars and trucks going, going down. Or off-road vehicles.
Those, those are the ones that are traveling. Yeah, folks that are driving a, a vehicle, say with a trailer, they, they, they're not. They're going through there by any means. Um, but there are certainly some, uh, a lot of use for the uh, A T V. Um, traffic, so mobiles and various other things that have, you know, even during working hours or, or something through there at a higher rate of speed.
Really, but it's not, not the landowners or anybody that's causing any problem. But if you could access them or land or, or draw.
I, I.
Or anything out of its.
Educated guys would say no.
Reparational.
Yeah, we're not, yeah, I don't think we're accusing anyone of trying to cause a problem. It, it's a, it's a, it's a long-time four-wheeler area. Um, you know, there, I believe the A T V club has some, some trails to the east of us as well, that they can access through the, the rail bed. Um, and uh, you know, we're, we're, we're not here saying something, there's a whole bunch of people causing problems, right? What we're here is highlighting a safety risk for the, the members of your community as well as uh, our, our employees. And then there's also the security.
So. Couple comments, I'm looking, looking at it uh, from a driving down the road perspective and, and on a Google Earth perspective, is the foliage from the trees. Uh, the canopy from the tree certainly would restrict uh, a view from coming in and out of access points to your facility. Um, has there been some thought put into, um, you know, widening, widening?
Yeah, we actually just, we actually just completed that work on our, on our westmost entrance. Um, we've cut the trees way back, uh, there for this very reason, as well as, um, we've, we've trimmed back, uh, closer to the main. Um, crossways as well. Uh, you know, that's actually a regular thing we do every year, um, in order for, for visibility, but.
It's quite a, quite an extensive amount of trees along the sides of the road.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's a pretty wide uh, road, which is great until you put a transport trailer on.
And so next question would be, uh, if I may through chair. Um, if the safety for the facility is, is that much of a concern, especially in that area, instead of gating off Hans Roads. Why, why wouldn't you gate your driveways and, and fence your property? Versus closing off access for all of.
Yeah, so, sorry if I wasn't clear before, but the road transits through what's called an explosive zone. Which means that they're at risk of an explosive event on that road. And so, um, the explosive regulatory division, uh, dictates the quantity distance or how far away you need to be from a public road. Um, various other things for the materials that you're handling or for the uh, products that you're making. And with the new products we have, um, as well as existing products. With the new licensing that we've uh, been put under, that road is in the explosive zone. It always has been, quite frankly. Um, but uh, now that we're a military supplier, there's much more scrutiny, um, on our controls and, and controlling access. So, um, it's not so much that we're concerned, you know, about someone coming through on their A T V. But if they happen to be there, or maybe they're at the quarry, um, you know, having a party or whatever. If something were to go wrong at our facility, they would be at a risk that they were unaware of.
Similar situations as this, as this exists particularly in H town in Brunswick. The main Trans-Canada Highway bisects the main training area. When you get to the entrance where the Trans-Canada intersects the property line for the range, there are probably. There're like forty by forty-foot square signs on the side of the road telling you. You're entering an explosive training area, there are live explosives here, do not stop, do not get out of your vehicle, transit completely through. And as you get to the other side where that is, there's another sign saying, if you continue as normal, you are now all.
So a similar situation to what you had.
Uh, no, that's a, that's a Trans-Canada highway.
That's a Trans-Canada. The, the principle's the same.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, you know, if it was that level of, of use, we'd be having a whole different conversation.
Yeah.
It's the same as pedal.
Pedal always garden as well.
So it's a similar security requirement.
Uh, so during your present, I'm gonna, I did, I get to go last.
Excellent.
Uh, during your presentation, you didn't measure, or mention infringements of the A T Vs coming along the rail line. The abandoned rail line and accessing your property from the rail line.
You are correct. And so I've been there since January. Uh, so not a, a huge amount, a hundred and twenty-four days, I think it is. I've never seen an A T V during working hours go down that rail bed. It's always transiting.
East, west?
East to west. They're either going further back behind the rail bed, because there's a couple of wide-open, you know, good places to go, A T V and swamps and all the rest that you wanna do. But I've never seen any traffic going.
Likewise, or so. It hasn't been brought to my attention, though, that, that there is infringement on your property from the rail bed.
There is.
Yeah, I mean, they, they, I mean, quite frankly, it's five hundred acres.
Yeah.
Um, the explosive zone we're concerned about is uh, that it comes up to the rail bed. So the rail bed itself is actually outside of the explosive zone based on the buildings and where we have the, the property materials. So the rail bed is actually not a problem. Um, and if they were to come inside, you know, drive there, if they wanna come in, I mean, we have, we have no trespassing signs up. We have, um, various things around the property to discourage that. Um, and you know, at some point, there'll be perimeter, uh, fencing required, uh, depending on the other products that we get from the Department of National Defense. Um, and uh, you know, once we, once we get that, those will be uh, increased as, as necessary.
Okay, um, I'm wondering, uh, if we can go back about five or six slides. Because you did, there was a definite ask here. I'm just trying to quantify the ask.
Yeah.
And uh. Since, I've seen some of your promotional material, just go back to that one for a second. One, no, one more up, one more. I, I just want that, that last slide with the uh, no, the other way. Uh, the, one more. Uh, I think this one is, this is your product here.
That's one of them, yeah. Yeah, those are the green markers.
You know, those are your green markers. I've, I've had demonstrations with those.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, I understand that, that you have some contracts with the, with the U S Navy or with those.
We actually sell those internationally, so we sell them all over the world.
You do?
Yeah, we do now. Uh, we have, uh, part of our expansion since the, um, since I joined was, uh, we have a business development, uh, director now. And uh, so we sell internationally to Australia, New Zealand, Italy.
Okay, so let's go back, let's go back to the slide with the asks on it and just have a quick look at that.
Those are suggestions, but we're, we're really just looking for.
I guess.
These are thoughts that we had as far as, um, you know, either compromises or something that could meet the need of safety of both. Folks coming through the property as well as our own folks, as well as the security aspect.
So later in our agenda here this evening, uh, I see we have a uh. Uh, we have an issue that deals with uh, this kind of thing. Um, but I'm just looking at that list there, reduce posted speed on Hans Road. Uh, now, the problem there is enforcement because we don't have a lot of ability. But there is a couple of things there that I think are, uh. You know, I, I, the reason I'm highlighting them is because later in the meeting, uh, as we discussed some of the options, well, I wanna refer back to these. Uh, so we've got uh, concepts like painted lines, and I believe you mentioned the yellow strip across the road. But most important to me is the speed bumps and the rumble strips because they do tend to slow down fast-moving traffic, especially A T Vs.
Yes.
So it seems to me that there are a couple of uh. So it seems to me that there are a couple of uh things that we could look at from both short and long term point of view. Um okay, well, that basically is my uh, those are my questions. Um. I I perhaps know a little bit uh more about the work that you were involved in to get registered with the Canadian government. Because I know that as a township, we were fairly active in that and. I just want to commend and mention the fact that when uh we first started talking, there were sixty employees. And I believe you said now there's a hundred and twenty four, so we can see the growth. And uh that that uh that says something too.
Hundred and twenty four that are also getting paid more competitively for the.
Yes, exactly. And and my understanding is from previous discussions that those folks basically are pretty wide spread throughout the South Granville region.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, well, those are my questions.
One more, Mr. Mayor? Yes, go ahead. Um um. There's a mention of a gate there and and blocking off access for for the road, so. So and there are um from the rail bed to to the four sixteen, there there are multiple landowners, correct? Like, you're you don't own the land.
We've been asking and asking. I've learned more tonight being here that there's uh that there's two more.
Reiterate that, say yes or.
Yeah, so so you're proposing by gating that to restricting land landowner access to their property by gating off the road?
They they would need uh just an escort through our facility to get to their for the for their property, for their own safety and for the security of the military.
But how would that work on a twenty four hour basis?
I mean, we'd have to, I think we have to ask them that. We'd have to give them a contact and then have a schedule, like have it scheduled. So if they wanted to go in on the weekend, we could get them through on the weekend.
Does it need to be um? Uh does it need to be escorted access or can it be um trained? Uh in other words, in order to transit through the, what you call it, the explosive zone?
Explosive zone, yeah.
Uh in order to transit through the explosive zone, uh we would, there there there's a certain amount of training that's required. Is that a possibility?
Uh I mean, it would be very difficult for us to to manage as you can, you know, and we're gonna stop everyone and say, have you had your training? It's not like a driver's license or something. Of course, we could do something like that. The other thing we could do is have them. Um you know, sign some sort of agreement or something, but they do not leave the road. And they go, you know, transit through exactly that. Um they they don't go on our property. We we do have another issue with, what you're monitoring with push cams at our quarry. Um where folks are, you know, fishing and it's been used for years. I felt horrible chasing a bams outfit yesterday, some last spring, but. Um that is also an area in our explosive zone and very close to our storage facility where there are live, um you know, munitions waiting for shipment, so.
Now, this quarry, is it on the north side?
Yes.
And is it back, is it, do the public have a way of getting vehicles still?
Only through ATV trails, which we have a sign posted um quite significantly for not trespassing, as well as a very large sign right after quarry now saying. Uh not to be using the quarry. And as I said, we are monitoring it with uh push cams at the moment. Um just to see uh what kind of traffic we have in case we need to add security or something to that area.
Okay, one, a reason I'm trying to look for um sort of um. Respond to the request for help, but at the same time recognize the need for access is that uh from previous. Um uh work on this issue, you're not the first. Um it it seems to me that there's, and and I know that we have some representatives of landowners here this evening. But I have the impression on, I'm gonna ask my staff to kind of verify this as as a subsequence to this meeting. I I would really like to get a handle on what is the actual private ownership beyond you. Uh I think that would be helpful to all parties.
Absolutely.
And that would go to Councilor Cameron's, uh like the traffic count, how often that road is accessed to Spackus all year long? Is it a certain time, like are we talking hunting camps or are we talking, you know, a seasonal type approach?
Now, do you have the mechanism to do the road, the travel count? Because uh our our systems are pretty crude.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have someone standing on the road counting, right? But I mean, that's not very uh scientific or.
Actually, I shouldn't say.
It's not just during working hours, right? It's twenty four seven.
I shouldn't say that because we do have devices which we can post.
Okay.
Uh which tell us not only the number in the vehicle of traffic, it gives us the speed and the time of day, et cetera. So I mean, I think that's maybe one of the places that we might be able to um help define the problem.
Yes.
So if we had one of those devices posted, we might charge it to your account, but but uh the relatively minor.
If I can, I just want to make one more comment and it's, and it is, you know, re- restricting landowner access and. Um be it winter or a hunter who wants to access their land, if if there's been public access. Um uh you know, I'd have a hard time gating it and telling someone who owns land that that they can no longer drive. Drive down the road to access their land, whether they choose to go there uh in the in the winter or the summer, whether it's one car or ten. Or so from my standpoint, um if it's their land and it's their access point, I I would like to see them continue to be able to access.
Yeah, and so we uh we are, we are willing to talk about purchasing the land.
So you have a compensation package.
Oh, well, I mean, it's not formalized yet. Uh of course, we were trying to figure out who all the people are and how much land there is. Um before we move too much farther, but that's not out of the realm of possibility if they, you know. Because quite frankly, um the we we're not in control of the explosive zone. And um under a certain amount of time, the explosive regulatory division might choose to um cease operations. If we can't address some of the rest of it. We're, we're trying to be here proactively as we're growing. Um this is not a new problem, as 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 mentioned. And um you know, we're, we're, we don't like the idea of of restricting access. We're trying to find a nice common medium where. We can protect our folks crossing the road, um as well as the vehicles that are sometimes carrying live munitions on the on the road and crossing the road. As well as um the people coming through. I mean, we don't want a young, I there was a young boy running through on his bike to the backpack. I don't know what he had in the back of that backpack. He went off into one of our uh, into one of our, you know, areas or for storage, right? So um you know, it's, it's, it's just, it's concerning uh from a safety perspective and that's. That's why we're here. Uh we're, we're not trying to cause problems for anybody, but we're looking for a compromise.
Okay, I understand the issues. Uh Councilor, one last round.
Thank you. Uh yes, just one more question. Um. From what I understand, we have Hans Road and then to the north of that is Glen Smale, is that correct? Is there, is there any? Is there any access points from Glen Smale Road into your property?
Our property doesn't go up that far enough. Really, we have access from the Glen Smale on the west side.
Yes.
Um but uh that doesn't change the explosive zone. Unfortunately, that's, that's where our buildings are, where our storage facilities are. Um there, that rail bed that you talked about though does connect Glen's uh Glen Smale to the east side.
I know, I know the rail.
Yeah.
Okay, one more.
Um you said that we had uh past experience with problems. This is the first I've heard in four years. So that this road bit?
Uh I was understood that this is how it, there's been conversations before. If they've not been in council, uh then I, it might have been informal.
Yeah, it's never been here.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. It has.
It has been here?
Yeah, I've mentioned it several times. Uh you know, in 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 not, not quite to the same degree as 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 you folks have outlined here tonight.
Well, carrying on with that, I mean, I I I'm all for maybe speed bumps and maybe some signs like you said, that's it, that's up and pedal while on so on, but uh. I have no idea closing the road.
Yeah, so and and again, we're not closing it. It's about, you know, but not so.
I have no idea.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm great to work on that first part, you know, speed bumps.
And signage would of course be a part of it anyway.
Yeah.
Uh but you know, and um helping with the crossing for our people is is a big part of it. Maybe um you know, we get some education or we get uh a relationship with the ATV. Um club, that I think is the hot, I I don't know, but I I believe or maybe the the high use there. Vehicles going through there and make them aware of the fact that um.
Sure, we'll get some information from the ATV.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so uh then I think that's, we had a good discussion. Thank you very much for your presentation and uh the uh, we're not gonna make any decisions here tonight, obviously. Appreciate the uh awareness level building and uh we'll see where things go from here over a period of time.
Absolutely, and I I mean, we're, we're willing to talk all sorts of options, right? We brought a few in here today. Um again, the paramount paramount thing for us is the safety of both our our community and our and our employees, so. If we can accomplish that, we're, we're good.
Fair enough. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um so. I'm moving on then to item number six, and I asked to have this item put on the agenda because this is a public meeting. And uh now, um. Did the letter, yes, in in our package here, we have on page eight. And nine of sixty six, we have a number of pieces of correspondence. Uh and I just wanted those pieces of correspondence highlighted in a public meeting. So I'm going backwards on the sheets, starting at the bottom of page nine. And on the bottom of page nine is the last or the January twenty sixth communication that we had from. Uh the Ministry of Economic Development, Job Creation and Trade. Uh which referred to the job site challenge. And uh we haven't heard much from them since January the twenty sixth. Until the next communication, which was on May the third. And on May the third, we learned uh from this letter that spans page eight and page nine. Uh that our site, the Cedar Grove Road Site, uh was not uh uh successful in in reaching. The top three of the job site challenge. Uh but I did want to just highlight uh one paragraph from that letter. And and that is the the second last, I guess you'd call it the third last paragraph. The ministry values the ongoing relationship with municipalities and regional entities in supporting investment attraction. And job creation efforts in Ontario. As such, ministry staff will continue to work closely with you in advancing. The investment readiness of industrial land, and they're talking about the Cedar Grove Road Site. Subject to your agreement, we have asked Newmark to undertake additional assessment work. In order to clearly identify options to position your community for investment attraction purposes. Additionally, Newmark and MEDJCT um would also review the detailed assessment. To assist you in better understanding the evaluation process, so that we would know how we were evaluated. And how the results of the assessment can uh best support your community's land development, investment attraction efforts. So I am looking forward to that and we'll discuss that a little bit further in the closed session this evening. But I think we should regard that paragraph as kind of the good news on a go forward basis. And then last uh is the uh communication at the top of page eight. Which is Mr. Grant's response uh to the letter, to the email of May the third, where Mr. Grant clearly outlines to Ministry of Economic Development, Job Creation and Trade. Uh that we acknowledge receipt, we appreciate the update, and we are looking forward. To the debriefing session later in the month. Now, uh Mr. Grant, have you had any response to the email of May the fourth about that uh debrief session?
Uh Mr. Mayor, there there has been no um farther communication, but we expect to send it up the date and the time.
Okay, the one thing that I would like, and 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 I think your letter of, your email of May the fourth kind of outlines it very clearly. Uh but I did want to go back to the paragraph that I just read. And the paragraph that I just read, it says, subject to your agreement. We have asked Newmark to undertake additional assessment work in order to clearly identify options, et cetera. I'm wondering if there is an onus on us there to indicate that we do have a agreement. And we would like Newmark to proceed to that next step. And I'm sort of leaving that as a hanging question until we get into the closed session later in the evening. But I just wanted to get this much of the communication uh clearly part of the public record, so. Thank you very much for that. And by the way, are there any questions from members of the of the committee before I move on here? Okay, so no questions. I'm about to move on then. And uh so now that gets me to item number seven. Uh seven A actually, which is the uh first quarter treasury and reserve reports. And uh there is a briefing note here that gives us actually four reports. And uh start with the first one, which is the financial report as of March the thirty first. And that's the report which appears on page twelve of sixty six. Uh which just sort of paints the overall uh picture and compares March of twenty twenty one. To March of twenty twenty two. So uh I'm just open the floor for a discussion on this one. And I see that the treasurer is here to answer any questions, so are there any questions with this report? Okay, there are no questions. I'm gonna move on, but before I do, I just wanted to acknowledge. Uh the work that has been done uh with regard to taxes receivable. And uh you can see the two taxes receivable numbers there. Uh on uh on that page. And uh I think we should acknowledge that uh the treasurer has been able to move us up from. Two hundred, seven hundred and three accounts, which were set up as pre-authorized payment to now. Si- seven hundred and forty accounts, which are set up for pre-authorized payment. And that's as a major effect, I I think will will have a major effect over, on a go forward basis. All right, there are no other questions with that particular one. I'm moving on then to the second. Uh report here, which is the long term debt schedule as of March the thirty first. The long term debt schedule is here. Are there any questions with this report? And the only thing that I want to point out, and I mentioned it to Mr. Grant before the meeting. Um there is a, there is a a long term debt to ourselves. Uh which I think Mr. Grant confirms is going to be uh paid out, I think it's during this calendar year. And uh so on the next report, maybe we could, or maybe it will already be gone by then, but if it is, it would be interesting to see. What it started out at and uh what's owing on it and when it ends. So are there any questions with this report? Okay, hearing none. Putting one then to item number three, the report number three, which is the year of the date twenty twenty two capital status report. As of March the thirty first, and that's the one on uh page fourteen of sixty six. And uh you can see the status of all our our capital projects there. Are there any questions with that report?
Okay, General Mayor, uh just the one, the uh the date for uh completion for the. The pool upgrade. Uh do we know that the pool will be up and running again for the season? It just says July. It doesn't say early July, July.
Completion date July one. Mr. Grant.
Uh Mr. Mayor, uh yes, every, everything is targeting that the entire project will be done and it it's not opening this season.
No, Mr. Grant, just a quick question. Uh now, when you say the entire project, does that include the the work that we were thinking was gonna have to be postponed until after pool close? In other words, every, everything, everything?
Uh yeah. So uh we originally, we we had anticipated to have the filter replaced in advance of of a full season. And then the the piping work completed in the fall after after closing. However, we're, we're, we should be able to, we're on target to complete the filter replacement and that piping work in advance of opening.
Okay, so then that would be the cosmetics.
The and and yeah, so some, some, some of the liner cosmetics will be, will be temporarily completed for this season. And uh and then uh a more full sub project would need to be done uh next year. And, and then a more fulsome project would need to be done next year.
And, no, that's good. Any others? Okay, no, no further questions there. I'm going now then to the item, the fourth report, this part here, which is the pre-audit reserve and reserve fund report as of March the thirty-first. And it's pointed out that the water and sewer, the twenty-twenty-one water and sewer, sewer surpluses have been finalized and they're now recorded. And I believe then the only thing left to record, to record and include here is the year-end surplus. Is that correct to the treasurer?
Through the chair, they'll see an item later on in the agenda where the recommendation for dividing the surplus into a couple of reserves, as was discussed previous in budget meetings. That once that's been resolved at committee and then approved at council, that will reflect in the reserve schedule subsequent to that.
Okay, thank you very much. And the one question I have with this one, because I, only because I keep forgetting. But on the very, on page fifteen of sixty-six, the very last reserve fund is called Dedicated Capital Reserve Fund. And I believe that we had asked that that be identified as, that it's the source there to, to go into that account is from the port. And I'd ask if the word port can be put behind that. And is the balance, which is the thirty-four, four eighty-seven, that was the balance that was in that account on December the thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one? And then it looks like the transfer in this year would be eight, six, six, zero. Is, is that correct?
That is just the first quarter. So we, we usually receive the, the response quarterly from, from the port. So the, the total amount will be divided up in quarters. So each quarter you'll see that grow the same amount. So the, it'll just, next, next quarter will be the sixteen, seventeen thousand.
Okay, so that is coming, it is money that's being transferred from the port on a quarterly basis and, and each quarter it looks like about eight, six, six, zero goes into that reserve.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions with this one? Okay, so I'm looking forward to getting the final one for December the thirty-first. And that will really get a good look at things. So no other questions. I'm going to move on. So now I'm moving to item number seven B, which is the first quarter budget variance report. And I'll just ask if there are any questions with the variance report. Treasurer points out that we're one quarter of the way through the year at March the thirty-first, so that's twenty-five percent. And should be approximately seventy-five percent left, but there are a lot of accounts that get fully paid in the first quarter and a lot of accounts that don't get paid until later. So are there any questions with this report? Just, Deputy.
Just in relation to fuel costs, it seems like, you know, a big, a big portion of, at least thirty percent of the discrepancies are going to be fuel, fuel costs, is that correct? And as long as they remain higher or even go higher, we'll see that discrepancy.
Yeah.
It's going to get a little bit worse, isn't it?
Yeah, I think so. Over this year, we may be challenged in our fuel costs, for sure.
Fuel cost. So everything else is pretty, is pretty much right on except for fuel, right?
Yeah, we were a little higher with our winter control than we were in twenty-one. But, and so the balance remaining is a little slim. We usually like to have a little bit more money in the budget for that, but we do have a reserve to draw off if we fall short of those winter control costs and the balance.
One, one more while I'm, while I'm at it, if I can, and that's if I can, I'll just ask the treasurer, is there anything that we should be noticing on, on this treasure that, that, you know, there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of questions coming forward? So I mean, fuel costs as of now, winter control, is there anything else that?
Well, in terms of expenditures that are high, yeah, fuel is very controlled. The food sector isn't a real big issue because we, we knew that we're, we're, it's, it's a full, a full cost paid out, so it's reflected there. And same effect, it's all with respect to the timing more than anything. I, I guess on a good note, fire permits for permit revenues are certainly coming in fast and furious. We have a budget of five thousand. I think the last time I looked, we were closer to almost eight or nine thousand dollars in that revenue. So we're getting more revenues than we had initially budgeted for. So that's just the same with public workers, you know. Addition, well, not, that's not more than what we budgeted, but in the addition of the EMS station, that those funds are coming in now, which will help toss that some of the public costs.
So I have councillor Dillabon, then councillor Hunter, then councillor Cameron. That's the order in which I saw them.
Oh, I, I had nothing.
So I thought I saw your hand. Councillor Hunter.
Just my question to you, the treasurer, for favorite resource payments that come to the township, do we get them at the end of the year or do we get them before the?
No, we get them towards the end of the year.
Most of the county.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to Mr. Shaw. I'm just wondering, Director of Operations, if with the high cost of fuel today and possible increases in the future would now be the time to perhaps do a preliminary study on buying bulk fuel and dispensing it ourselves to our own vehicles.
Through, through, through the mayor, that, that's certainly something that we're, that we're taking into consideration.
Just a quick question. With regard to the burn permits, because this is the first year that there's been a charge for them, I think it's been ten dollars. And I just point out, I don't know how many members of council or members of the committee have burn permits, but when you phone to register a burn, they, they remind you that there's a ten-dollar fee for the permit. And I have not heard a single comment about that ten-dollar fee. Are the number of permits that we've issued this year comparable in number to where we were with the number issued last year?
Very close to the same, yes. But yeah, we have, at the staff level, we have not heard any concerns about the ten-dollar fee. There is going to be, and there are some property owners that have maybe two or three properties and they're buying one permit per, per property. And that, that doesn't seem to be an issue.
What we see from the chief's report is that the, the number of actual burns is comparable to last year as well. Okay, so if there are no more questions with this report, I'm about to move on. And so that's the budget variance report. Thank you very much. And so now I'm on item seven C, which is the use of the modernization funding. And it's like we still have a nickel or a dime left in this one. But I lost track of the first half. And I, I see the list here on the first half on page twenty-two, but I just can't remember any of the numbers. But does, does, let me ask the question first before I go around the table and look for comments and questions from the committee. There's a, a number of commitments here that are not yet solidified. Are, are those commitments pretty much expected to come through in their entirety? As per the third, that would be the, I guess it's the second column from the right. Are we expecting all of those commitments to, to be realized?
Through the chair, I would say the, most of them are for sure. The only one that is basically up for, I guess, grabs in terms of dollar values would be the, the app or the costs associated with the app. We have been, like, I think the, probably the original contractor had provided us with a bid for an app. And then the provider, Pin Street, which is what they, what they call it, is no longer available, available to them. So they were going to provide us with something else, and they did provide staff with a little synopsis of, of the type of app they can provide us. And it isn't much different than basically our website. You can put your website, the website on our, on any mobile phone or, or tablet and see it like an app. So it wasn't going to get us anything different. And so you know, it was, it was going to cost us and use that much money up, but it wasn't actually going to provide us with really what we wanted in terms of being able to source everything on, on the app. So that certainly is up for grabs. And the only other thing would be the money allocated to renovation here at the township office. But all the other items, it's either been spent or will be spent in invoicing this, this company.
Okay, and so if I could just go one step further through the CIO to the, to the treasurer again. So is the, is the website work basically complete? And the reason I ask that question is because I know we've talked about this problem in dealing with the app aspect of the contract. So the reason I'm asking the question is because in view of that difficulty procuring that, and if the website is complete, mightn't we not wind up this contract and, and, and then bring this money, which is a remaining commitment, bring it down to the remaining dollars remaining?
Yeah, that's, that's definitely a decision of council that we were, that we were wanting maybe to discuss and determine whether that was the route she wanted to go. We didn't know whether the app was still something that you really wanted us to staff to pursue. But it, it will cost us certainly more than the money that's sitting there remaining. If we do try to find something that's going to be of any value. I think some of the staff members were talking to some of the other municipalities that, that are looking at apps, and they said, yeah, they spent a lot of money on an app and they can see the subscription to that app, you know, big municipalities that only have maybe a hundred people that actually use the app. So in our municipality, it may be not worth it for the number of people that may actually use it.
Okay, so I think the treasurer's looking for direction here, committee members, and I think we should have a discussion of this. Do we wind up this contract now and save everybody a lot of time and trouble searching around for something that doesn't exist or something whose benefit is marginal compared to cost? I'd like to have some discussion on that.
I think, I think in, in the package that further on at, at item H, it's suggested in there, the solution for this money is that we use it for the digitization of records. So looking down a little bit later, we're going to go through that, that process anyways.
Okay, so you just want to postpone this discussion until we get to H?
Sure. I, I, I would add one further thing for, for an app as well. I, I don't believe that it's, that it's worth the, the dollar value that, you know, the treasurer is suggesting for the small amount of usage, but I do think app development for computer science students or, you know, Queen students, things like that. You know, there, there might be a pathway to getting an app developed that, that doesn't require using Escrib or whatever, you know, company we use and such a high dollar value. There might be another method and another way, way to do it if we approach approach that in the future, if we want, if, you know, councils don't want to do at a later date, consider that.
Well, have we firmly identified what we want this app to do?
That's a big question. I'm not a hundred percent sure that we have determined what the functionality of the app will do. And I guess maybe that's where staff are struggling to figure out. The developers have provided us with ideas, but when we look at the idea, it's not wholesome enough. And it, and it's like, it wouldn't really, it doesn't give as much functionality as our, as our website. Our website gets a lot of use. A lot of people use the website and, you know, they can do it on their phone because it, it is, it's one added, so it can look like the number.
That's, and, and through the mayor, that's, that's the main thing when it comes to, you know, a good quality website. I'm not a fan of, of URL use on your phone, but as long as everything is accessible on the tablet or, or on the cellphone as if it would be on a, on a computer, then basically it's not really, yeah.
Okay, well, move on and get to, I didn't see any other hands, so I'm going to move on. And that gets me to seven D, which is the twenty-twenty-one year-end surplus. So there is a surplus here. Basically, it's, it's four twenty-six, four thousand, four hundred and twenty-six thousand less, seventy-four thousand that belongs to the building department, which means a differential, as I see it, of about three hundred and fifty-two thousand. So there is a briefing note and there is a recommendation as to what to do with that three hundred roughly, three hundred and fifty-two thousand. And the briefing note suggests that it be divided into two pieces. Three hundred and forty-five of that to go to the environmental services, SORM Sewer Reserve, and a balance of seven thousand four hundred to the Public Works Capital Reserve. And plus, of course, the piece that goes to the building department. So further discussion on this briefing note, chairs looking for a mover and a secondary to action, the recommendation.
Just a question.
Question?
Through you to the treasurer, the building department had a pretty healthy surplus last year, seventy, seventy-four thousand or so.
No, no. It had before, at the beginning of the year, it had a five-thousand-dollar deficit. And the, the seventy-four thousand is this year's surplus, which is now being recommended be moved to that, to that reserve account.
Yes, I understand that. So so we, where are we this year with it?
So in terms of our budget, we actually have increased that budget fairly significantly with the addition of the, of the buy-in department. So we will, the budget is anticipating to pull about sixty-eight, sixty, I think around sixty-seven, sixty-eight thousand with that reserve. But again, we might have saw it in the last quarter, building department. They're still seeing a lot of building permits come in, activity is pretty strong in there. So, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to say whether, you know, they're, maybe they won't draw us, we won't need to draw as much.
Yeah, because the anticipation is that we would use pretty much all of this, this transfer to it to fund the newest employee, basically, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Well, if I go back to the previous report, which was the budget variance report, and I go to page nineteen, is that not the under, under department operating expenses I have called building? Is that the right place to look?
Correct, yeah. So there's two spots as a revenue on the, on page one of that variance report. And we are twenty-six thousand out of the, of the budgeted value to thirteen. That's a little less than last year, but I think there was a lot. I'm not sure what the number is in April, and so now we can see that our expenditures are higher than last year by about seventeen thousand dollars. And it's basically against ours.
Because of the increase in the, the one employee increase. Okay, additional questions with regard to the briefing note, the recommendation?
Sure.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, moving. Does he have a secondary? Councillor Hunter, seconding. Further questions, if any? Hearing done, I'm about to call a question. Those favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Right now, we come to our favorite one, seven E, where we try to understand how we reconcile a cash prepared budget with an asset. Prepared budget. Well, it's not the government, it's the PSAB, the Public Sector Accounting Board. No, it isn't. It's a separate body. It's a matter of fact, it's a, I have a lot of arguments with my accountant friends over this. Because first time that I've ever seen a, a, a prescription where assets don't equal liabilities. I mean, it's unbelievable. But in any case, we do our budget on a cash basis. So here's the explanation as to how we reconcile the two methods of accounting. And there is a recommendation here that council rec, or committee recommends that council adopt the twenty-twenty-two Public Sector Accounting Board Budget Addendum Report, which meets the requirements of Regulation two eighty-four slash zero nine. So questions with the briefing note or with the recommendation? So questions with the briefing note or with the recommendation, if any? Hearing done.
I'll move the recommendations.
Okay, I have deputy mayor moving, the second here, moving the move, does he have a second? No, 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 it's it's just a different way of approaching things. All right, I'm gonna call the question on the recommendation, those in favor? Motion is carried.
Put your, uh, I am to use, the auditors do use this report when they audit us.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Not for, not for much.
And you can all run businesses.
All right, now I'm at item seven F. Which is the tax rate uh recommendation. To advise the council of the twenty twenty two tax rates and draft a bylaw to impose tax rates for twenty twenty two. We uh adopted the budget by the estimates, budget estimates. But now this will set the tax rates, there is a recommendation, uh questions, if any, with the briefing note? Looking for a mover and a secondary.
I'm move.
I have counselor Dillabong moving, does he have a second? Counselor Cameron seconding. Discussion, if any, further, hearing none, those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. All right, now I'm uh. Item number seven G, which is part eight of the material building code. Transition of the subject tank program or the subject. Waste program. So we are transitioning, as you know, as the health unit is no longer in this business. And we're moving uh that program and purchasing it from, or the recommendation here is that we. Uh, purchase that program from South Nation Conservation. That's the intent of the briefing note, and that's the intent of the recommendation. Been discussed a couple of times at various committee meetings. This would sort of finalize it and formalize it, discussion, if any, deputy mayor.
Yeah, uh, through through the mayor to to the C A O, uh, five year. On five year contract. What happens if it's not a good dance partner? What happens is they have a much more restrictive approach than what the. Uh, health unit had, and we find it difficult to deal with the restrictions as. I know it says building code and so on and so forth, but. Just curious, what happens if they're on a good dance partner?
So through 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 the mayor, I I would say that. Uh, all reports from uh the the perform this uh service for. Municipalities in the east of us and actually the uh the C A O, Augusta. He has nothing but going reviews with the way they operate that program and I anticipate. From from our other work in relationships in South Nation Conservation that it will go very slowly.
Can I just stop with one more?
Uh, just, uh, but just in in response to your first question.
Yeah.
On page eight of sixteen, there is a section re there regarding early termination. May not be terminated privately in term unless such termination is agreed to in writing by both parties. So there has to be mutual agreement to terminate.
Was there any appetite for a shorter term? Or was it five years, take it or leave it kind of deal?
Uh, through through the through through the chair, that 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 is their standard term.
Renewable.
Five.
Okay, I'm just going to make one comment. Uh, well, first of all, any other members of the committee have co questions or comments? Councilman Hunter.
My comment, uh, sitting on the committee, we hear the the courts all the time on this and we. We see that.
When you say sitting on the committee on South Nation. Yes, okay.
And and uh. We've got nothing but good feedback. Contractors down there, and I know contractors that work both Leach and Grandville and and South Nation. And and. Two of them are quite thrilled that we were going away from Leach and Grandville and going to. Southeast Asia to look at. Southeast Asia has very good response time. We have a reputation of responding within fourteen days. The last building I did, I waited pretty near a month on Leach and Grandville to get there. Do it, so. I think the staff and they're prepared to, with that, this talk and Angela, they're prepared. Looks like Augusta will be go probably going to to move this, move the, one of the questions was. Transportation time, time finished here, they're looking at at most likely setting up a satellite office. Neither Edgburn or Augusta. And and having having an inspector within this area. Will, they'll be hiring another inspector.
That's good.
Maybe somebody from the, maybe one of ours from down Mount Rainier, I just, I'm not ready. Move up here, but they're looking at. Their estimate is right now, when they get everything figured out, who does it? There'll probably be a satellite officer, they won't be waiting for somebody to drive from Finch.
Oh, that's good news. Uh, any other questions? Uh, one of the comments that I wanted to make is I tried to, I tried to compare the rates. And uh, South Nation has quite a, quite a rate schedule. And uh, the health unit, Leeds Grandville Land Art District Health Unit, has a rather simplified schedule. And uh, so I had a lot of difficulty comparing rates here. Um, but I guess the in in the end result, it really doesn't matter what the rate is because. Number one, the uh, the provider has to has to assess a rate which covers their costs. That's the first thing, because the cost to us as a township is zero. The 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 applicant pays the cost uh through the rate structure, so. Uh, although I did have trouble, I finally said, no, Pat, don't spend any more time on this, it's not really worth it. Okay, uh, so I have the recommendation here in front of me, are there any other questions? Hearing done, looking for a mover and a secondary, counselor Hunter moving.
All second.
And counselor Cameron seconding. And I'm about to call the question on the recommendation, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, so now I'm at uh. Number H, which is the record digitization project. Again, we have here a briefing though. And uh, some discussions with staff in preparation for this meeting about this project. So quite an ambitious uh project and personally, having been sitting at this table. Since we moved basically from an entirely paper-based system to. Now I would say we're probably ninety five percent digitized. And a lot of our other previous records, I had thought that most of them had been. Uh, changed over from paper to digital. It turns out that staff has uncovered quite a a trove of. Uh, past paper records that have to be uh digitized and and put into the into the electronic system, so. The briefing note is there, are there are there any questions with the briefing note?
I don't have any questions, but I'm prepared to move the recommendations, it's written.
Okay, and have you moved deputy, uh deputy mayor moving, do you have a second? I have counselor Hunter seconding. Uh, and the committee recommends that council, number one, sole source the records digitization project with. Image Advantage Solutions, Inc. Authorized reallocating the nineteen thousand three twenty nine from the township app project. Toward the record digitization project and cover the project cost of thirty thousand three seventy one thirty five plus non-revated H S T. So there's, I I'm sorry, I missed that one. I read the the briefing note, I missed the fact that the nineteen three twenty nine. Was coming from that other project, I apologize. I think it's worth, so, uh, well, counselor Dillabong wants in here.
Yes, ma'am, before we go in here, so are are we saying we're gonna, we're not gonna have the app, township app in this?
That's what this is saying.
Take the nineteen thousand, okay? I I don't know, I all I have, I. I like apps on my phone.
Apps and do what?
I like apps, wow.
Do what?
Apps like my Bell, I call my bank, it's, you know, everything, it's an app, so you do your banking, so on and so forth. I'm not, I all I'm concerned about is we ever update, say, charging. Uh, for a boat launching cardinal, can we still do that on our website to this? Sort of like that, that's all, things like that, that's what I'm concerned. So we can continue to do that?
Yeah, the our current website, I was.
Sorry, uh, through the.
Through the chair has has a lot of functionality where we were able to add. Easily add the the permit for for PayPal or dog and cat and dog and licensing and our and our landfill tickets. We were able to do the food cycler.
And I can do it here.
Through the through the website, they just had to go in and log in and. And and paid with their credit card, you know, so I think we have um with our current website, a lot more functionality than what we used to have with our website. And uh, it's maybe, you know, and and they, we made sure the website was able to fit on mobile devices. Easily be able to read it on a mobile device.
So I just can't download, has to work on, it was very talented. Okay, that's fine, I can live with it as long as you can do that thing. Good, thank you.
I just, I just wanted to add that um. You stumped a non-revated H S T, but the the last four or five words of the recommendation were from the municipal. Modernization re reserve fund. That it's from, from the funds that we received from the provincial government to modernize service services in twenty nineteen.
Okay, uh, anybody, any any other questions before I call the question, hearing done, want to call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, and now I'm on number J, which is municipal highway closures. And uh.
Uh, I missed me, mayor.
Pardon?
I, not J.
Oh, sorry, yeah, you're right, it is I, my apologies. Okay, so I have a briefing note here with some uh. Policies and procedures governing the closure and sale of municipal highways. Uh, now, uh, just before we start the discussion. This policies and procedures looks very familiar to what used to be in the act. It's now not, no longer in the municipal act. Is this then a policy and procedure that we would adopt as municipal policies and procedures?
Uh, through the uh, through the chair, that is correct, it would be, it would be adopted as a as a municipal policy and procedure.
Okay, so now is is, all right, so the recommendation here is that. We adopt the attached policies and procedures to govern the closure and sale, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the essence of what this is about. Discussion, if any? Go ahead.
Basically, they're pretty well followed for. Townships did all the time.
Yep, well, we were used to doing it according to the act. Then we just carried on.
You had to follow through.
Yeah.
Same way, so.
Okay, so are there any other questions? If not, the chair is looking for a mover and a secondary to action, the recommendation. Okay, I have counselor Hunter moving. Does uh, does he have a second here?
Sure.
Counselor Cameron. All right, I'm about to call the question on the recommendation, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, and so now I'm. Uh, now I'm at J. H J, Spencerville and Johnstown Brains Tender Award. Now. Now, the point where. And and I'm gonna say a few words here just before we deal with this because. I know there's a recommendation here, I'm I'm gonna tell you, I'm hoping that the recommendation does not come forward. Because I I think that this this needs a lot more work. Uh, first of all, it's very seldom that you see a project come in a million dollars, well, it's basically a. A two and a half million dollar project and it's coming in a million dollars overestimate. Which I find absolutely knock me off my chair and uh. We're being uh today, here tonight, given only one, two alternatives. Do the whole project or do a part of the project and. From my point of view, I think there are a number of other alternatives that should be looked at. And uh, I'm just gonna list what in my quick. Recording, I I recorded as a number of other alternatives and these alternatives are all alternatives that we use at county council. Can we make design changes? Could we, for example, eliminate curves and gutters partially or all? Uh, did the tender include the driveway aprons, repaving all the driveway aprons? Could we eliminate the driveway aprons? Did the tender require that the contractor keep the streets open while he did the work? Because that's a lot more costly than saying to the contractor, you can have this section of street for twenty one days. And the residents on that street will park their cars somebody place else and walk to their homes. That gives the contractor an awful big scope for uh dollar savings. So there are a lot of things that I think could be um uh in investigated here. Uh, the other thing is, uh, have there been discussion with the two lowest contractors? To see whether those lowest contractors could help us out of this? I mean, just because. I mean, they're the the two lowest and you can see who they are. They, it, you know, has the staff met with them to say, listen, we can't deal with this whole project. At this cost, we want the whole project done, help us out here, what can you do to suggest to us that we can do differently? So uh, that's why I'm kind of hoping that. That the, that, and I'm I'm asking that the committee refer this back to staff for additional uh for additional uh study. I mean, I'd like to get it done too, but this is horrendous price. Chairs open for discussion, looking for, looking for a direction.
What?
Go ahead.
Mister Mayor, we wait, we wait another whole month and they come back and say, well, no, we can't do anything, it may even go up.
It doesn't have, we don't have to wait a month.
Okay, but when when is it going to come back to the to council?
Can come back when the staff is ready. And the engineers had a chance to do some additional work.
What could be month?
Could be.
And then you're in the June.
You know, the other alternative is just spend a month. That's the other alternative.
Well, we've been down this road though.
We burn?
We've been down this road, we, I know.
Not at this price, we haven't.
No, but I I mean, yes, it's a shock, there's no question, but I'm sure. Uh, you know, we can go, we can beat this to death, you know, uh, curves and gutters and cutting off roads and. And and what what's it gonna save us? Knuckles and dimes.
You don't know that. Which hasn't been investigated.
Was the quote the curves?
Curves.
Was it not around half a million dollars?
Well, we 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 haven't even asked what all of these other alternatives would say, they haven't even asked the question.
I I just thought that was brought up at one time.
Yeah, oh, the question was at the time of these, when 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 the project was being designed. The question that we were asked by the engineer was, should I include curves and gutters in the tender package? And the answer was yes, we would like to see them tender. What we haven't learned is is what was the cost of that asked? Because we have, it wasn't broken out for us and it's not in front of us.
It's just that for some reason, I thought uh we had to figure that.
It was.
Well, that was, I don't remember the figure itself, but I remember it cost.
It was around a hundred thousand for Spencerville.
Yeah.
Two eighty five, two ninety five.
I I just, I don't. Chair is looking for a direction.
Right. Unless I'm mistaken, uh, through C A O. These tenders are, you see, we only have what, twenty one or twenty eight days to accept or reject.
Uh, they're, uh, through through the chair, they're bound for forty five days, so.
So I would think on these tenders. Local payment is the lowest one. More than half, like you provide that into this this month for late reprice or tender. I can guarantee it'll be up to fifteen to twenty percent. It's not going to commit what they did there.
Up, you said?
Up.
Yeah, oh, no, I agree.
But is there, with respect to what the what the mayor said and us, I certainly agree with the both. Counselor Hunter, couns- counselor Dillabong. Um, but with with respect to what. Um but with with respect to what the mayor said, I'm uh in favor. So are we able to go back to eliminate the other the other offers, go back to Coco? Without accepting their their bid and try to find ways to negotiate that bid down with before we accept it?
Certainly, it's done all the time. They don't have to talk to us, but we can ask to talk to them.
Yeah, through the through through the chair, it it's something that can be done. We're we're on. We're on a much tighter timeline than than they are with respect to um. Ma- maintaining this cost, but there is certainly nothing to say that once uh once an award's made, that further negotiations can't. Can't take place as well.
Lose your higher, you lose your power. That's why I think you should talk on lowest two.
In in all fairness, through the through the chair, like. There's like five or six things that was mentioned, and and I'm not sure if 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 committee is willing to say, well, okay, we're gonna take off. Curves and gutters on on this location, we're gonna leave them here. Now I'm gonna say you don't have access to your to to your property for twenty-one days. I I I I get that. I I do get the concept and 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 I do get that that the 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 price is higher than substantially higher than anticipated. But um. I would, I I I I would go with the process of uh if if if. Committee and council is committed to doing this, th- th- this project to um proceed. And 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 look for some uh potential uh savings with some adjustments, but. Taking out curves and gutters and then potential redesign, we're in a we're in a tight timeframe and I I'm a little concerned that we'll 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 miss something.
Well, I'd sure like to know what the differential would be if we gave the contractor complete access to the working area. Without having to work around traffic each night and each day. Because I know that that's an expensive part of any contract. I'd sure like to know what that differential is just by itself. You've got to remember, we're spending taxpayers' dollars here. You know, I don't think you can just ten, ten million dollars over and you just snap it up and don't don't even blink. But that's not due diligence, in my mind. I wouldn't spend my own money that way.
So through 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 the chair, I'm parents, don't need to proceed at all.
No, no, but don't don't get me wrong. I mean, I I want, I'd like to see this project done as well, but it's gotta be paid for.
I don't know what the. I have talked to a lot of ones in in Johnstown and there's. I don't know that. One of the big showing points of the work here in Spencerville for the drainage was one of the things that. People either very happy with which that there's gonna be curves and gutters. Water wasn't gonna flow over on on the drive on the door areas and stuff, especially on the. Back street street, because the water tends to run run right into people's driveways. And we were quite pleased that there was going to be curves and gutters along there. Water built was gonna be funnel to the to the green and taken away, not run onto the property, so. I know it costs money, but if we're gonna do a project, do it right. Don't start cutting cutting corners and ending up that. Nobody's happy.
Some people haven't commented yet, Councilor Cameron.
Well. You're correct, Mr. Mayor. I haven't. And I was I was very surprised at the overage. So the forty-five days comes to an end at the end of this month.
Through through the chair, that's correct.
I wish we had another month to work on this. Really do. But I do, I do want to see this this done. However. Was there was just a question to staff, was there was there any negotiations uh with? With the lowest bidder or the anyone else? Regarding getting the prices down? Through 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 the chair, not 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 at this stage. But if 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 committee is interested in uh staff going back to the contractor and looking at items like hydro seed versus sod. But I will raise points that we've had a number of projects where we've. Went with the medium hydro seed versus sod and nothing but.
Trouble.
Uh trouble and problems, but when there 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 are some areas, it's just. To what to to one degree, but if 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 that's if that's of interest, we can certainly uh. Have the the engineer and the 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 low bidder and 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 staff get together to see what sort of options. Uh to 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 reduce the the scope uh that can be done. It's just we also want to make sure that committee and council is going to be satisfied with the end product. Thank you, thank you, Mr.
To the chair to the uh treasurer, uh this is a million dollars over budget. In the reserves, where would we get that one point five mil?
Uh we'd certainly be pressed to use uh some of the industrial park money at this point, because that's the only largest reserve that we have.
Some of the what, sir?
The industrial park money.
Okay.
Or 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 the additional amount of money.
It it comes down though to debt finance. Whether we borrow it from ourselves or whether we borrow it from a bank.
Correct.
Six one half dozen of the other.
Correct.
Chair is looking for directions. Got another meeting next week, thinks. Refer back to staff, it can come back next week. I mean, depending on how much stuff, how much work, staff work can be done in a week. And you have another meeting a week from that.
Through the chair, I'd be willing to let staff go back and and and. Talk to them and see if they have any suggestions of how they could bring it down, but still maintain the integrity of the con- contract. I don't want to see us start.
I don't want to see.
Stuff out, but if there's a way that they can do it, as you say, the street by street or something, it's special. For one week they can't access Cedar Street or something, or one week they can't. Do the section like, you know, no pressure broke, but they're sure down into sections that for X number of days, no one is doing doing the chores and that. They have no way of getting their vehicle to their house for that number of days, but.
I think it's gonna be nickels and dimes.
For a week, it's not.
I'm willing to go one week.
Get the can from the drainage project and go stand down the road for for four years. I mean, we have to get something, but it's been longer than that. Uh and and certainly the work that that just needs to be done here in Spencerville needs to be done as well, so. I'm all for waiting a week, but. I don't really see, I don't see a whole other option other than spending the money.
Prepare to shut them back, have a week, bring back the next, any meeting. Any suggestions for any way to save them? A few dollars along the long way, but.
That would be fine uh with with me, uh Mr. CIO to bring it to the next meeting.
Now, October, the May of, May of sixteen.
May sixteenth.
Okay, so if I've got, if I've heard correctly what I'm hearing, I'm hearing Councilor Honey make the motion that this be referred back to staff for negotiations. With low bidder. Uh to return on return to the table by May sixteenth. Is that the intent of what I'm hearing?
No, I don't think so.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have Councilor Dillabaw seconding. Okay, I'm gonna call a question or not then? I think I heard in tense, those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Okay, now moving on again. Actually, I see him pretty much at the end. Say again?
But ju- just ju- just looking for a a little bit of clarity of what. On the table and what 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 is sort of not on the table in 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 generality with respect to uh.
I'll I'll see if I can clarify that and I'll I'll verbalize it. And if I make a mistake verbalizing it, uh I want the council members or the committee members to jump in and tell me, no, Mr. Mayor, you've got that wrong. But here's what I hear. We're returning this to staff so that the staff can enter into negotiations with the low bid contractor. Seeking from the contractor suggestions as to how the price can be lowered. There are a number of things that we don't want to see changed. One of which is curves and gutters. We want to see those kept included. Now. I didn't get a full read on where we were with hydro seeding versus sod. If those in favor of the change from hydro seeding to sod, the change from sod to hydro seeding. Respect sod, those in favor of changing from the spec, which is sod to hydro seeding, raise your hands.
Well, we get a price on both.
Yeah, well, there's the other thing, we could get a price on both.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Okay, let's do it that way. We we want the contractor to provide a price of both, and that's that's my by far the much better way to do it. Because then the contractor knows what he's looking for. So that deals with that issue. Uh the other thing that I heard on the table and I I heard a couple of times was. Giving the contractor complete access to the work area for a limited period of time. So that the the people that live on that street during that period of construction would be walking to and from closest point to their property. Inconvenient, but a big, in my mind, what would the saving be to the contracts? Might not be worth it. If it's not worth it, it's not worth it. We'll see from, see what the number tells us. Now, that's the essence of what I heard, Mr. Grant, and I didn't. I don't I don't think I heard much more beyond that.
I'm sure I just I just wanted to confirm that those were the points.
I think we're, we leave it. Staff bringing back the contractor, maybe the contractor has something that he's read read in that.
Yep.
I definitely know one.
Lay down area for laying down material or something, that we can provide a site that he can bring material on on the.
Yep.
That he doesn't have to have it offsite, maybe that's different. Where areas, maybe if he has a. The Spencerville, if he can use a part part of the of the rip park parking lot to use it the lay down area or something that. He doesn't have to truck.
Well, see, that's one of the reasons I brought forward the idea of giving him access, complete total access to the site. Because if you give him a full street, he can use the street as lay down area and all his materials are right there handy. He doesn't have to move them twice from a from a quarry to a lay down area and then from a lay down area to the site. You can put them right on the street because he doesn't have to keep the street open every night. That could save him a lot of money. Okay, so Mr. Grant, is that sufficient?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, uh so now I'm at, I think. I'm at counselor in council inquiries or notices of motion. Is that where I am?
That is where you are.
Okay, does anybody have anything to bring up here?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um yes, uh I I'd like to bring forward a motion uh that staff uh. Get my glasses off here, excuse me. Uh proceed on getting quotes uh for the building and and the resurrection of a dog park at Cardinal. Uh the uh the UC Jerry would be the unused second uh second ball diamond uh. Between the first ball diamond and the tennis court. Uh there's enough room there for a large dog park and a small dog park. Uh that the uh that the cost uh for this and future development they paid for from the Cardinal Hydro. We have a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in that fund as of now. I'm not anticipating this project will come anywhere near that amount. Um we do have quite a bit of fencing already there, already installed. Uh simple tie-in with uh the ingredient fencing or or if if even if we need that. And uh there's even fencing with gates uh already uh already there. So I would uh I would like a second to do that, Mr. Mayor.
Well, you're giving notice of motion between now and the next time you find a seconder, write a motion out.
Correct.
Once you have it written, I'll be happy to second.
So you got your second.
Thank you.
Anybody else bring anything forward here?
I don't have a motion or any other comment, but I've had a a couple of comments from uh people that bought our our recyclers. And and they're thrilled with the way that it's working. Five days and they're dumping it, dumping it out and uh they're really happy, I thought they're enjoying. One couple said they're really enjoying doing it, real excited, but. Recycling, I said, I guess you must have pretty developed life. Councilor Hunter, remind them.
Do chicken bones.
Yeah, you can. You can do chicken bones.
Takes longer than five hours.
Well, I don't know. I I I'm doing like, I'm doing twenty-five weeks. We should have one couple said their company.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
We've got.
So just several conversations.
I just have one.
Okay, you're.
It doesn't matter, I don't.
Go ahead.
One arm myself.
You go ahead.
Um uh mine would be to staff and and it would be, normally I would have put it in an email, I I forgot again tonight. So uh the inquiry would be, um do we, I mean. We had some graffiti on on a heritage, you know, the heritage rocks at the canal. Uh this weekend, there's been, I'm assuming, a temporary measure uh put in place. Uh is there something long term that we'll remove? Is there a plan in place for a long term removal of of that of that graffiti or are we leaving it? As it is now?
Through through the chair, certainly temporary measures are done. Uh we we we'll look to see if there's something that can be done in that regard. Could I just ask where this was?
You don't want to hear them, you don't see it?
I'm the only one killing it. Wow, on the canal rocks.
Is that right?
Yeah. You don't want to know that.
Okay. No, I.
Some side east of where the bridge used to be.
No, honestly, whatever it was. Saturday was that you could kind of notice. Today you can, it's all black. But the whole area, you know what I'm saying? I mean, whatever you did, whatever stuff you did was working, I mean. No, it's not, no.
Not gonna go there.
Just let it go.
Okay, so no, nothing else?
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
We burn?
I have one place. Incurious notification uh today, uh two thirty, the Ocean Explorer came to our port at two thirty. I was the only one there, uh counsel. And I took the steps to welcome our the captain to our port. And god behold, I had a bit of fifteen minute talk with him and he's from your crew. And he has family over there. So very nice, uh two thirds of the. Of uh the ship was filled, met people from South Carolina, talked to them, Michigan. Good, well organized. The bus is so and so important to see them. Sorry?
We think wasn't organized.
Yeah, and like the captain said, you know what? They're gonna blame it on me, but it wasn't, they got, they kept getting shifted when they knocked on your all. And they got to the to to the uh.
St. Lambert.
No, no, when you go through the, uh, through the locks, they got stopped, they let the, the industrial ships go through, not put them behind. Four ships you had to wait to get through the locks, and then they go ahead, they're going, they're, they're coming west, they start going, they say stop and then the ones from the west would pass them. That was not his fault, but Mike, he, he had a root of awakening bringing that big boy in, you know, when he, the the current caught him, and he's going in the dock, and he, he's going over the opposite way, and he got it fixed up, but who? But it was well, beautiful ship, so you guys gotta get down there and see it.
I've seen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, did you?
Oh, yeah, I got pictures, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. No.
See, yeah, Sunday's a sister ship.
One patrol.
Yeah, so anyways, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, so we're moving on. And so I think the next one is the mayor's report. Well, I'm going to start the mayor's report by acknowledging the fact that Mrs. Anderson from Queen and Charlotte is here, and I know that she has a definite interest in getting some streetlights up Queen and Charlotte, so I'll kind of put this as a, as a inquiry, because in an earlier meeting, we did ask that, uh, the staff prepare a report to bring back to how we might address that request. So I'm just starting with that one. Uh, then secondly, I just want to get this in there quickly. Uh, at an earlier meeting, uh, we did discuss the, the water and sewer agreements that we have with Prescott, and, and we did, uh, Mr. Grant did send a letter or an email to, uh, the CIO at Prescott, asking about that. And, uh, I don't know, Mr. Grant, whether, I, I think you've indicated to me that you have had a verbal response, but I don't know whether you've had a, a written response.
So, so through the, uh, through you to, Mayor, uh, I have, had a written response from the, uh, from Prescott.
You have?
I have.
Okay, so I haven't seen it, and I don't think the members of the committee have.
I, I will forward that to council.
Uh, thank you very much, and, and I understand that that's quite encouraging, and I just want to indicate that, uh, Mayor Malenka and Mayor Todd and I have had a discussion as well, and, uh, I, I, I feel much better after that discussion. Uh, so go to the Ocean Explorer as well, as Counselor Dillabaw, now didn't wait around this morning until it became quite obvious that the ship was going to be delayed extensively, and I had to take my wife to the uh, hospital in Ottawa, but I did get back before the ship, and I waited for some period of time. Now, uh, Counselor Dillabaw, I want to thank you for going down to the wharf. I had another commitment, I had to leave before the tour buses, the tour buses were all there and all set up. I had another commitment, I had to leave just, uh, as the tour buses were leaving, so I never did get to stay long enough to see the folks from the ship. I'm assuming Counselor, maybe come out of snow, did the, did the captain and the tour conductor, tour, uh, they, they call them the, the cruise director, did they get off after the buses left or before the buses left?
No, Stephen met them there when the, when the, when the, when the ship came in.
Uh, yeah, but they, the captain and the cruise director wouldn't be the first ones off the ship, I don't think, were they?
Uh, the captain was halfway, he wanted to make sure the dock was docked, and took pictures of it, you know, so many edges out from the wharf and so on, he was very, very thorough about that. But he, he, yeah, he wasn't the last one off, if not as a good.
Yeah, the other.
You don't know saying his much, captain's last one going down.
The other thing that became pretty obvious during the whole process, and I had done quite an extensive bit of work in preparation here, including, again, I wish I'd known you were there. I'd have given, I'd have left that presentation with you to present.
I was looking for it, that's.
A big baron?
I was looking for it, I thought maybe Robert had.
No, I thought maybe, I didn't know you were there, I, I could have given me a call, I had it in my car, I could have given it to you. Um, it was quite obvious that Mr. Burnett had the relationship with the ship, and it was Mr. Burnett that had arranged the coaches. And, uh, and he was in charge of the shore excursion program, and I, I certainly didn't want to disturb that in any way, shape or form. It seems to be a, quite a robust relationship there, so I'm glad to know that, that his company is, is actively involved, and I had a long discussion this morning with one of the tour guides that was going to be, uh, on one of the buses going to Brockville. So I think the buses may be actually just a, 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 a very shortened uh, visit to Brockville and, uh, and the ship was still scheduled to leave at seven tonight, and I'm assuming that it did. Uh, so moving to the next item, uh, which is the, the Trillium application for the pickleball and the tennis courts. So, um, I did have a talk with Mr. Grant as to, uh, a communication with Trillium. And, uh, I thought that there was some new information that could be added to our application after the application had gone in. And that new information, which may or may not affect the application, was that the port now has made a commitment to that project, so Mr. Grant, I don't know whether in your comments or in your communication with Trillium, you were able to get that added to our as an late addendum to our application, uh, or, or even if you were able to reach the right people.
Yeah, but, but, Mr. Mayor, I, I was unable to, uh, to, to, to reach the, uh, the, the right people with respect to, uh, those that would be evaluated.
Okay. Now, is that just a question of not finding the right person, or?
Uh, well, I, I have made a couple, a couple calls with respect to that, uh, but typically it's just the general help line, so I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get, uh, within the organization.
Okay, you don't have a name yet then?
I do not have a name.
Well, okay, I'll see if I can get your name, and that'll help it. Uh, though, couple of other things that I want to just mention, um, and I'm just, I'm gonna mention this in public, because, uh, I think it is an issue that council's gonna have to deal with. Uh, a few years ago, we sold two acres of our industrial parkland fronting on County Road Two just east of the old Bingo Hall to Purple Farms. Uh, and they took on an obligation to develop that property within two years, and I think we're now at about four years past. Uh, you will, you will recall that a year ago, December, we all visited that, uh, that, uh, Purple Farm operation, and this was before they had received their final licenses and before they had actually gone into production. So since our visit in December twenty, December twenty, that would have been, they're now in production. And they've been producing for probably just over a year and two or three months, and I think that we're gonna have to revisit this issue. So I just raised that issue so that council is aware of it, and I, I think the public should be aware of it too, that when we put out these um, uh, sales with conditions, we, we try to make sure that we hold the, the, um, the beneficiary to the con- conditions. The last thing that I want to mention that I did already mention it under job site challenge was this debriefing session with Newmark and Ministry of Economic Development, Job Creation and Trade, and we'll discuss that more in the closed session, so that's my report for now, and, uh, I'm going to move on then into item number nine, or excuse me, item number ten, which is the question period. So, um, there are two folks left in the gallery, out of twelve, uh, at the beginning of the meeting.
I think it was something I said. Is there any movement on when my lights are coming or no?
Well, there's no guarantees, uh, and, and it's, the, you, you've heard me ask staff for the report, I did ask at one other meeting, but you know, staff gets busy with a number of projects, so, uh, I'm sure the staff will be bringing us forward a report with locations and timing and costing. Now, Mr. Grant wants in here.
Yeah, so I just, just wanted to indicate that we have that on the work plan for the second quarter, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so it is in the work plan.
So are you saying the second quarter?
That's, uh, okay, so our first.
That just means it's going to be discussed again.
Correct.
Okay, and then after that, is there another discussion and then another discussion, or I don't understand how this works? If you want to, okay.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, so what, what we will do is, uh, we, we, we will do some assessments on that road, and we will contact uh, some third parties with respect to, uh, to get some costing and, and, and locations on whether, uh, some of those existing poles can be used, whether we're going to need, uh, new poles and, and, and get some, some, some of that costing uh, back to us, so that we'll determine, uh, number one, the, uh, quantity that we may be able to do.
If I can just interject here, this is one of the problems that we have here, when you, when you want to hang a new light, Hydro wants you to pay for the new pole.
I understand that.
Yeah.
You mean they want me to pay for the pole?
No, they want us to pay for the pole.
So that's a different story. Just the reserve.
That would be helpful.
No, I already know what pole is. And, uh, there was something going on at the elevator this weekend.
Well, no, that was the ship that Counselor Dillabaw spoke about today.
Saw a lot of trucks. What was that?
Oh, yeah, the port run on Saturday night.
I'm sorry?
It, it was called the Fort Town Night Run on Saturday night.
Okay, okay. I just wondered, maybe it was something that we should have known about that was probably advertised, but it had nothing to do with you, okay?
Well, the port hosted the run.
Of course, I understand, yes, okay. But any, any, uh, activities like that that go on pertaining to our township? Do we advertise in the beacon and let there are special events going on? Does the township advertise in the beacon, rather than just putting it on devices that we have to pull up, because some of us don't have computers, right?
Okay, so in that situation, it becomes kind of interesting, because it's not our event. We're just the host and the location, so I don't think we would actually a- advertise that. Sometimes I write about those kind of things, but I don't think I did write about this one.
No, you didn't.
No, I didn't think so.
I mean, I read you.
Yeah.
You're well read, anyway, I just wanted to know how that worked, whether it is advertised, I understand if it's.
And you see.
It's not routine.
Yeah, see, Michelle, the guy that runs the run, he's, he's basically totally in charge, and the runners, how he attracts his runners, I don't know, but he does seem to get runners from far and wide.
Yes, exactly.
I see it on Facebook.
Okay, well, I don't have that, now Bev has something to say.
Oh.
I'm here in about the ditches.
The which?
My ditches.
Johnstown.
Yeah. I just, I've lived there for fifty years, nothing has ever been done with it.
Well, you've heard ours, you've heard us commit ourselves tonight dollar amount not yet determined on getting the project started. Our big project is, is if we clean out ditches, the water's gotta have some place to run. So the, the first priority is getting the water underneath County Road Two. So this project that we were talking about tonight, it came in a million dollars over budget, is Mary Street and Sophia Street. From County Road Two up to Second Street, and we, we will set the, and by the way, just so you know, the entire Johnstown area has been engineered, and the, the engineers know now what the traffic flow patterns are and where the water has to go. So now they've started to design the system, the system that will drain this water away. The first two projects are Mary Street and Sophia Street, it's all gotta go that, all, well, all the, the south half all has to go down the one of those two streets, so that's the project that we're talking about right now, what's that?
It's gotta get out of the ditch, you get to the cover.
Yeah, that's right.
Right.
Yeah.
The ground is higher than the.
Yeah, and that, and there's no point cleaning the ditch if we can't get it to go someplace.
I don't want a dump, I just want a landscape that I can cut it and the drain.
Okay, now that's a different issue.
Yeah.
Because we get a lot of people that already are landscaped to the edge of the pavement that don't want their lawns ditched, if I can put it that way. So we understand that, now how the engineers handle that, we haven't seen the detailed design drawings, but the, the concept that I think that we've got from the engineer is that anybody that presently has a lawn which comes to the edge of the pavement, the drain will be put in, and the lawn will be brought back to come to the edge of the gutter. So if you have a lawn that comes to the edge of the pavement or the.
Part of the property.
Big baron?
Just part of our property, when we bought down there.
How far, how far north are you, forget?
Just on corner of Elizabeth and Second.
So Elizabeth and Second on the north side of Second or the south side of Second, your north side of Second?
North side.
Yeah, okay, so that's not.
The northeast.
Yeah, but that area, trying to remember whether it goes north or comes south, I can't remember, so.
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 And just to help you out, Mr. Mayor, I've talked to our operation manager, Mr. Shaw, and he's gonna make you take a trip up.
Oh, okay.
It couldn't take much to fix it, like I've got three drains going to the east side of my property. And I don't know whether the township did it years ago or the owners, but it go the halfway up the block, the backyard would flood. So they ran a weeper all back of our property, and the weeper goes into that, so that's all draining. Plus my son, plus these that are east of me, theirs runs into it too. Now their ditch is fine beside me.
But it doesn't flow, doesn't flow across Second and further down.
No, to the corner.
Okay, so Counselor Dillabaw indicates that he's discussed that with Mr. Shaw, and Mr. Shaw will visit the location.
Will you call me and let me know that I can be there?
Mr. Shaw? Certainly, I can, that's, so through the chair, like, after all.
Yeah.
Or, or, uh, send me an email.
Okay.
For township or just through the call.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so now I'm at item number eleven, which is the closed session, and I believe if someone has the motion to go into the closed session, we'll have a short break.
Deputy Mayor Deschamps, ready proceeding closed session at eight thirty-seven P M, order to address matter pertaining to section three thirty-nine, two C, proposed pending acquisition or disposal of land by municipality or local board specifically IO and minutes of closed session date April eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you very much, uh, those in favor? Okay, motion is carried, and we just have fifty-five minute session.
Deputy Mayor Deschamps, closed meeting does now adjourn, the meeting of council does now resume nine oh three P M.
Nine oh three. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion is carried, so then I'm going to report out from the closed session, and Deputy Mayor Deschamps has a motion to bring forward.
I do, Mr. Mayor, thank you, with my myself and second, Counselor John Hunter. That committee receives and approves a closed session minutes dated April eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you very much, those in favor?
Aye.
So a lot, motion is carried, those minutes are approved, and I guess the next thing is the adjournment, does somebody have a motion to adjourn, or?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Deputy Ms. South, seconded by Counselor Cameron.
Hold on, sir. I think you reported, reported.
Oh, oh, yes, okay, fair enough, yeah, fair enough. So council, in that enclosed session, uh, discuss the pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality, specifically, uh, the discussion of the IO lands and provided direction to staff. My apologies. So now, motion to adjourn, move by Ms. South and second by Counselor Cameron, the committee does now adjourn at nine oh five P M. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried, thank you.